Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Thursday, June 12, 2025. City Planning Board meeting will be held here in the Selective hearing at Town Hall. Uh, we are minus one members that Ms. Burton's gone here and Ms. Lewis is online, so all votes be a roll call. We have a post agenda here, our second session. Are we ready?
Uh, welcome to their roll call.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. So we're gonna open the public hearing for the Seating Road Public Shading Tree at 799 Countryway. All right. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15C, the Seating Road Act, and Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, Public Shading Trees, the Planning Board, in conjunction with the tree warden, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 12, 2025, at 6:30 PM, at the Selective Hearing Room, Town Hall. Six hundred Chief Justice Fishy Highway, Secult Land, the subject of the hearing is the removal of three trees. One twenty-six inch caliber red oak, one eighteen inch caliber red maple, and one ten inch caliber red maple in Town Drive Way for a purpose or a proposed new driveway and sidewalk for three multi-family buildings of five units each at 799 Countryway. Assessors now, twelve dash two dash thirty-four dash thirty-six, for applicant long guilt. Plans are available for view in the planning office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Where are you, Miss?
Hello, Paul Seaver, from Great Consulting.
How are you today?
Good, how are you? So I'm here from the Seating Road application, for the running company that 799 and 803 Countryway, supported aware of. As part of this application, um, as K to B to remove uh, three trees that are located in the right way that are in location of the proposed sidewalk. Um, the trees consist of a one red oak and two red maples. Um, and we are we just received comments from the tree wardens today that so they have the application, but we have to provide replacement trees for trees that will move three inch caliber. Um, we are already have a one, two, three, four red maples proposed.
No, these are in addition.
Addition. Yeah, so we would need one red oak. Well, it's essentially better well.
Excuse me, just clarification. You're taking out three trees.
Speak up, Amy.
You're taking out three trees. You have to replace over and above what you're doing with three more trees.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, we could add three more trees.
Perfect. They not, might not necessarily have to be on site. You may have to put them wherever the tree warden wants to. So.
I am not gonna put them on site.
Not gonna put them on site, but you own the town, three trees.
All right, got it.
All right. I just wanted to, what?
Three more trees.
Three more trees.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, I don't necessarily build here.
Right.
That's what I told you, you want to hang on.
What? Free trees?
Free trees.
We love trees. I mean, I see you cutting them down. Okay, so. That's there. Anything else, Karen?
No, I intend the tree wardens noted that it's fine, can't be trimmed down. In fact, one of them is probably dead. And so, um, and each the trees must be replaced with three caliber trees, and I have a perfect plan by.
Excellent, sure.
So.
Excellent.
Should like that, we'll, I will, we'll get into that when we talk about, when we get into the public fair, um, public fair. Okay. For, uh, for 799, we don't.
Okay. Uh. So. That's all, all right. Any comments, Ms. Lewis, any comments?
No.
Right. Ms. Burbine? Nope. Mr. Pritchard?
Nope.
Okay, we're all set. Do you want to have a motion? Which one? Do you have the motion? What? Send the motion folder. For a phone, says, I have forty presents. And I have pennies. You wanna look in your folder with motions? I can hear? Just a few. Yeah, thank you. It's too many pieces of paper. Well, there you go. I know if it's at the applicant's request.
No, no.
Jesus.
A lot of paper.
I will, that the planning board vote. Let's face it. I will that the planning board vote to approve the removal of the following trees in connection with the construction of a driveway and proposed sidewalk for the construction of three multi-family buildings of five units each in the public driveway of 799 Countryway. Three deciduous trees, one twenty-six inch red oak, one eighteen inch red maple, and one eighteen, one ten inch red maple. No stone walls are proposed to be removed. All trees are to be replaced with a minimum of three inch caliber native trees. Situative highway public ground department with input with town planner will determine placement on or near the site, so it's not the obscure site distance requirements for the development. For a second.
Second.
We have a roll call vote, thank you. Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Sid Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the second part of the kitchen public hearing. Of the main design review with stormwater permit, 799 803 Countryway. Who was going to give that?
Okay. Do you, do you wanna do the architectural presentation first, or the city?
Um, what is the board, what's, what was the other one?
The architectural, um, my architect just went, this is here, it's a civil architect, to go over any questions you might have on the building design, and then, uh, Sid Pauls doing the civil stuff, so.
Yeah, I see in the building, per se, yeah, from the architect. I think so. Do you wanna go the architectural?
Okay, we'll take it, we'll do that. Okay.
By the way, between Cohasset and Duck'sburg, you guys are the most entertaining, so I, I'm enjoying myself.
Thanks. That's good, man.
No, it's good, and actually, um, your designer review board process has been really lovely, and I've been very proud of it, Tom. So, um, it actually, do you mind if I do this, it'll be easier for me to flip. Can you see that?
I just see onions. But that's, can you see that? And I don't care if I can't.
Can I see that? I'm pretty far away.
Yeah. Can you see that? No.
No, I cannot see that. You wanna try and show it from there? All right, I'll just, I'll kinda do this quickly, I think you guys just wanna kinda get a general understanding?
Yeah.
Um, I have maybe four of the designer review board. Me, uh, these are just some, um, images that show some materials, and they, uh, like the material selection I had. Um, we basically have these three buildings side by side. We're following your bylaws in terms of this district where the scale is a little bit bigger than some of the other areas. We're also trying to be very careful about the scale because we know that the context of the surrounding are some smaller buildings as well. The mi- mindset was that we do not want this to look like a residential building that we just put on steroids. We really do want it to look different. However, we want this, the, there to be some ins and outs, some spaces and shapes, so that it meets the scale of, um, human mark, a human scale, and that each space has an individual level to make anyone who lives there feel like they're coming home to their own sense of place. Uh, this is just the street view of the three structures, just to give you a sense of what that looks like. Some renderings for, to help you with the understanding of what they look like. Apologies, the renderings are computer renderings, not necessarily the exact colors, but, um, as close as I can do for, uh, what I've got in terms of programs. Um, each building has five units, one of the units is a first floor unit. The others, um, have stairs that are entered into, some of them have stairs that go up to second, to a couple of different levels. Each unit, um, this is, uh, building one, so it's the 799 location. Each unit, um, has access to nature through windows, access to nature through some private decks, and in the case of the lower level, some private patio space, so that each space can feel really uh, individual comfortable. Um, the floor plans basically have, uh, garages. They're all, three buildings are very similar, so I'll probably just show you the one, and you can uh, take a look at the plans further if you'd like to. I can interpret, but each of the spaces have their own individual garage. Uh, you can enter into each space from the garage. Uh, the building in the back has, um, access from the street level. They, some of them have step up, and then most of them have stairs that go up to get to the levels up above this first floor level. Um, on the street side, this is the street end. There is a unit that, um, is much further down in the grade because we have a slope coming down. So these levels, everything is a little bit of a different level, and this, um, entry here is really just off the street, so it doesn't feel too high. Second floor is showing how some of the, um, floor plans are laid out. We have kitchens, living room, a little office sort of zones. Uh, they're all individual, there's no single, we're not taking one and repeating it over and over. Um, and they all have self views where we can access them. If you couldn't access a self view, for example, this unit in the back that has sunlight coming through here, and then has sunlight coming from the uh, upper level. They're all about depending somewhere between nineteen hundred and twenty-four hundred, I think is the largest one. Uh, don't count me on that, I feel like I'm, I've been a lot studying, studying these. The plans also have between each unit, uh, double walls, so we're preventing sound. We're, it's a demising law, and the idea is that we're really trying to be sure that these spaces feel good for everybody's well being. Uh, there is, in some of the, one or two of the buildings, we do have, uh, some roof access where I needed, one, I like you saying, one, everybody can have a little bit of exterior, your private space. So one of the buildings, this particular one, there's a, a private depth of one of the units up on top. The elevations follow your code, this red line is the code. Um, we are stepping it back. We want the scale to not feel too big up to the street, which I understand that would be what your bylaws were looking to do anyway. Uh, it's also just a good way of designing, and not only does it step back on the street side, but it actually steps back on the other sides as well. So we really are trying to have some different overhangs, different shadow lines, um, and make sure that the building, as I said, feels good for scale. Uh, this is another, second version, second building. Um, you can see the other buildings sort of adjacent to it. Let's keep kinda rolling through. These plans are very similar. This one just entered from the, um, north side versus the south side.
Are all the garage doors, they don't face the street?
None of the garage doors face the street. I'm just gonna skip to the third building, the, like I said, the floor plans are all very similar. Oops. Uh, there's building, the buildings on 799, those are more similar to each other. The third building is, um, on the 803 location, it's a little bit larger. Um, there's just a little bit more room around it, so we pushed up our elbows a little bit. Uh, again, the idea is that there are some sort of materials that are kind of fun and interesting, some bigger windows, uh, but lots of shadow line, lots of roof overhangs to to keep the scale feeling pretty good. This is the, uh, what third building looks like on 803. So you can see these units, um, are actually, I, I think one of the largest ones actually is around twenty-three hundred. These are in the two thousand range for the, the third building, the other ones range from, I think, uh, seventeen hundred to about two thousand. Just to give you a sense of that. Again, this, this one, that's the street end. You're entering from this side, there is nature all the way around. Lots of, um, opportunity for light to come in from each face. Lots of opportunity for some decks. Uh, the building actually has some upper level decks, um, that are pretty nice, um, and with privacy between them. So, like I said, I, while there's a nice community, and there's lots of outdoor amenities, um, for the neighbors to enjoy together, I just wanted to make sure each individual unit had, um, exterior space to enjoy privately as well. Any questions, thoughts, or ideas?
Where are the your finishes?
Um, I think Paul's, yeah, Paul's got them on the site plan. Yeah, if that's okay, uh, we do intend them to all have some, um, fencing around, so it will blend into the background as much as possible. All right?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
You guys, are you gonna have any questions for the architect, or for the architect, the, or if we have a question, then the John could answer the question.
Yeah, I can answer once.
And then, you know, um, you can get information from Jessica, or.
No, please, wait.
Yeah, if you need anything.
Uh, no, you can guess. And they all want to be such an entertaining people.
Well, you guys have so much fun.
Well, I'm telling you what, I've had a, a night after night of meetings, and I'd like to have one night off. Thank you, very nice.
And you say hi to him.
I will do that.
Did the other one say it's? Yeah, I know they're. So again, I'm Paul Seaver, from Great Consulting. Um, I also have Gabe from the office here, who handles most of the stormwater design, and has great expertise with it. I'm Paul Seaver.
Thank you. Let, let me get them out. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, all right, so Paul Seaver, from Great Consulting, and also Gabe from our office, who handles stormwater designers online as well, to, uh, address any technical questions we have in stormwater. Um, so since we met with the planning board last, we've submitted revised plans and addressing comments from the local planning board, town departments, and, uh, peer review. Um, in addition, we submitted the Seating Road application, which you just heard. Um, I'd like to go through the discrepancies to the site plan, and a lot of them are just comments, but, uh, feel free to interrupt me and go with that, and get anywhere in the plan and point things out. Just looking out. Um, so the first comment was a, uh, these building walls proposed to the property, um, and underground lighting is now proposed to each unit. We, we will be here. Um, the outdoor amenity space areas have been revised to be fifteen percent requirements on both lots, originally it was a combined lot, but we separated it out, they had fifteen percent amenity space in this spot, and fifteen percent amenity space on this spot. Um, a traffic trip generation is provided as requested. Um, the proposed trees along the front of the property were revised to be looking further back, to the site distance concerns that we had, or addressed with the last building. Um, the trees further back, and we also changed where tree types get it, and it's be the was to be long necked. Style tree. Um, we've provided a dry connection for the future silver standard. Um, the aerial overlay of the dispositions plan has been removed, as requested. Um, so one of the items we are requesting a waiver for is to allow parking to be within front feet, the, within five feet of the front building side. So essentially, these parking spaces closest to Countryway here is a requirement to have the parking five feet back from the front side of the building. Um, right now, we are posting to be two point nine feet back, so we are requesting a waiver for, for to reduce that requirement of five feet. We are also putting screen in along the front, from each driveway as well. Can you say screen? And some landscaping? Landscaping. Um, we are requesting a shared driveway. Share driveway applies with section seven seventy point six, um, with respect to traffic safety, access, site distance, emergency access. Um, as discussed at the last meeting, as far as deliveries, um, Amazon deliveries, we anticipate will just be making quick stops in front of each unit, and coming in, taking delivery, getting in their vehicles and moving on. Uh, longer refrigeration deliveries will utilize the space in front of the dumpster out here, or the access guest parking in the back. Um, building number, second label on each, on each plan set, as requested. Uh, parking spaces are now shown on the plan as requested. Um, and discussing the last planning board meeting, um, one of the areas of concern was the length of these driveways being eighteen feet long, and with space needed, proper vehicle. Uh, essentially, those larger than adverse sized vehicles concerns about the back end extending out the access drive. Um, one of the discussions we had was adding some even more, at the end of each driveway, which the vehicles pretty extended past. Um, and then, as far as larger vehicles, there's adequate space to do in the garage for the unit owners to park their larger sized vehicle in the garage, the small sized vehicle outside, or they could also park the larger vehicle, a lot of the rear of the garage. Any, any questions so far from the board? More? Um, the number of proposed parking spaces, we believe is appropriate for the site. Um, reduce the impervious coverage by providing interior garage spaces by utilizing both the roof coverage, and then also a space underneath for garage parking, essentially eliminating the need for other parking space outside. Um, we have narrow access drives, uh, drives aren't only as wide as they need to be for emergency vehicles. Uh, we're providing two spaces per unit currently, with five additional guest parking spaces in every other property. Um, we're reduced, to reduce the number of spaces to one point five spaces per unit. Um, it's our opinion that it wouldn't be adequate on site, and potentially have equal parking at the access drives or on Countryways. These those though, parking that that are proposing here is added to the site. It's not any more than we feel is needed. Even though it's two spaces per unit as opposed to one point five space per unit we found. We also provide guest parking, which we feel is a, a sort of presidential property. Um, the project proposes fifteen garage spaces that would have capabilities for recharging as requested. Um, one item here is tandem parking, whether with the address. Uh, we understand that the maximum lot of tandem parking is seventy-five percent of the proposed parking on the site. Um, it's kind of unclear with the bylaw if these technically form with a definition or an empty tandem parking. You have structure parking, then exterior driveway parking. Um, so, like to make, see, the board's determination on that is, um, the proposed parking areas are twelve feet wide by eighteen feet long outside. Twelve feet wide by roughly twenty-two feet long. The interior parking spaces. Um, both spaces separately exceed the, um, parking size requirements, by eighteen feet. Um, in addition, the parking lot configuration is consistent with that of a residential dwelling. We have a driveway leading up to the garage. Um, four tandem parking spaces, we need to be eliminated, in order to meet that seventy-five percent requirement, which we could do, easily accomplish that. Um, but the proposed driveways in front of the garage spaces would still be present, they're needed to maintain, look into the garage. Um, so we're requesting the board to get a determination of these spaces meeting kind of the bylaw with respect to tandem parking, and a waiver be required, there's the excess in the seventy-five percent requirement. I believe we're at roughly eighty-five percent as proposed. The board have any comments?
I'm gonna be drawing a period, but it takes a screen, plus.
Okay. So the architectural plans have been revised to show a doorway, we're missing a doorway into a stairwell personally. So that has been added. Um, we provided a draft easement plan, um, as requested. I don't think I've turned draft easement. I see.
Yeah, yeah, so we have to show them, we just don't have eight right now.
Right, 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 okay. Um, I think the last waiver we are requesting is that regards to the twenty-five percent impervious coverage within the front setback. Um, the project proposes thirty-two point five percent impervious coverage, which consists of access drives and walkways, which are actually a lot of this impervious coverage within the front, front yard area. Um, and again, these driveways are only as wide as they're as needed to be for emergency access, so again, they can be small to reduce the coverage. Um, I believe that the board wanted us to have access walkways from the sidewalk of the building, so that's another area, impervious area that we think we're required to have. Then, typically, you get out of a walkway, we can, another impervious area, so it's just not easy for us to meet that twenty-five percent requirement. And we are only proposing access drives no wider than they need to be in, inside walkways, essentially. Uh, so we're requesting a waiver to increase it from twenty-five percent impervious to thirty-two point five percent. Uh, crosswalks as shown on the site, on this cross, the access drives and sidewalks. Um, we are requesting a waiver. Uh, the last one that we're requesting is with respect to the front building length. There's a requirement that the front building length must be minimal of fifty percent for length of the block footage. And currently, we're at forty-nine percent. Each building's at forty-eight feet, um, which, I think, is about the forty-nine percent, just under the fifty percent requirement.
But that's just one building that we need to make, is that true?
Um, yes, I believe it's just lots, seven ninety-nine, the two buildings on it, the combined length is just under fifty percent of the block. Uh, with respect to stormwater, um, there's two issues that we would like to address after that, after I go through the minor review comments. Um, that we need to use board's assistance and determination to go up. Uh, but some of the minor comments that we provided, uh, the design has been revised to use class B soils as requested. Um, there was a small depression in the front of the site that captured some of the existing runoff that wasn't modeled previously in redevelopment conditions, which we since modeled. Um, the calculations have been updated to use decks for us. Um, the infiltration systems have been resized, so that the runoff captured during the one and two year storms would be pre-infiltrated. Um, we've got additional test pits on the site, and there is the infiltration basins to verify groundwater elevations and swirl pipes. And, uh, the stormwater report has been updated to state that the site is located in the preferred area, as requested. So the, uh, two main stormwater issues that we're encountering that we need board's assistance with is essentially, um, we need to request to obtain a waiver, um, from the board for stormwater requirement, um, eight performance standards, A three. So I'm sure the board knows off the top of their head that that is.
We're trying to.
So that is actually the, uh, the retention of the first one inch of stormwater for new development and redevelopment, one or more acres. Uh, for new development or redevelopment of one or more acres, the first inch of runoff from all impervious surfaces must be retained on site unless proof removal of the first inch of runoff, EMP is provided. Uh, shut off and containment is required in the case of discharge near an environmental sensitive area. Uh, so it's our, is, opinion that we have designed the system in a manner that meets the spirit of the requirement. Due to constraints, we aren't able to fully meet this requirement. Um, the issue is that the, the requirement requires that the drainage design capture and treat the first inch of runoff from all the impervious areas of the site. Um, this requirement's more stringent than the state stormwater regulations, which would need. Um, the areas that we are unable to attain the one inch of runoff is at the intersection of the driveway and country. is at the intersection of the driveway and countryway. Essentially, the regulations require me to capture all impervious areas infiltrating that one inch runoff on site. That's not actually feasible to do based on the groundwater elevation. And in order to convey that stormwater, you'd have to put some sort of drainage structure at a low point in the site. And then invade that to a subsurface infiltration system and need the two foot groundwater separation. Which is not feasible on the site and really wouldn't be feasible for any development on the site. It's just impossible to meet that arid elevation back to the ground. Groundwater set around two and a half feet, three feet lower than that, you need a two foot groundwater separation to meet that treatment for that one inch rainfall. So essentially it's not even be achieved for redevelopment. We believe the planning board can grant this waiver as the drainage device provides the following. The drainage system does retain the equivalent volume, which is not come from the little corner of the driveway. The required retention volume is 2,203 cubic feet. And the system provides to retain 6,399 cubic feet. In the two year storm and retention is significantly more than what is required, almost three times more. The drainage design reduces the amount of untreated impervious cover runoff from the site of 7,000 point three square feet existing to 4,045 square feet proposed. Improvement reduction in the drain from the drainage system and countryway where everything is flowing current. And the drainage design reduces deep rate, the volume runoff. Improvement reduction to burn the countryway drainage system as well. So due to the site logistics, there's just not enough room to meet requirements. So probably would not be able to meet the standard is required to its full extent. So therefore we are asking a waiver for that one inch requirement.
Thank you.
What's possible, but it's not one inch, what's the?
So it's just not possible to capture this small area that's looking to you just can't collect this and route it to an infiltration system. It's just not feasible to do that from an elevation standpoint.
Just asking too. Rather than one inch, there's nothing.
No, so we, so there's not no treatment in the small portion here. But we're providing more than one inch of the overall impervious coverage of the site.
So the issue you're asking. Right, it's one inch zero.
Zero essentially, because you just can't capture this tree, which is not feasible, never would be feasible for any development. But the volume that's required is 2,203 cubic feet. And what we're providing is 6,399.
So that one inch is drained straight.
Right. Both drivers. It's just not feasible from an elevation standpoint, like that, right, from an infiltration system and need the groundwater separation. And any development would have the same constraints.
Listening to what, and everybody forbid, forbid our hand yours, alright? I don't need to go over Mr. Chesky's whatever. Listening to what you have to say. This development is too big. It's covered in this one. And I am not sure how it can be solved. And I know that Mr. Chesky constructs great projects in this time, say no. They're excellent. One on drought terraces, one on old country right in the street. This to me is, and for you to say that no other development could go here, I wonder if that's true. I'm wondering if somehow, and I know our bylaw stipulates that we have to have so much rain in front. Maybe that's where the waiver needs to come, this is just mine. And push it back. So that get rid of those parking spaces that are in the there. Push, push the whole thing up. So that then you have more that you can retain across the front. Because I have a real problem with any sort of going into countryway. It's going to create a huge, huge problem.
This is only 15 feet of the end of the driveway. This is what's going, the entire, the entire site, there's nothing there now. And we're putting in a drainage system capture all that except for the 15 feet where it runs down into the street and that's, that's a, you know, when it rains, it's not, all the rest is being captured. And treated, it's, it's just from that elevation. I mean, if it was a matter of a catch basin in the bottom or going into, putting something that directs you into the the street storm drain, you know, something like that, but it's not it's not a lot of work.
I haven't investigated that possibility of putting anything into the street system, if you talk to DPW about that.
That's the second topic that I want to talk about and discuss. So, you know. So it's the second topic that I want to discuss, there's two issues that we wanted to discuss before on this issue.
So I want to hear from Mr. Chesky first.
Wait a minute, let's hear what he has to say about the second issue.
Yes. So, thank you. So as far as runoff, so the other issue that we encountered at the last meeting discussed, and we had, we don't want to see runoff from the crush stone overflow trench flowing over the side. We're asking for the applicant, the applicant is asking for the board's assistance in coordinating a subsurface pipe connection to the existing catch basin located on the property. We've been unable to coordinate this connection with the DPW. We sent them emails and stuff, and voicemails, and we haven't got a response from DPW at this point.
What are you sending the emails and voicemails to?
So we sent an email to the individuals in shop.
Yeah.
Yes. And I don't know, Gabe's online here, you can also elaborate on it, his voicemails are messages sent alone. And Kevin also sent one, I believe, yes, as well.
DPW personally hasn't told me about any communication.
Okay. So the existing drainage runs overland on your countryway from the site to the catch basin in front of the rubble. The applicant, at the request of the board, has agreed to construct the sidewalk along the front property. The sidewalk is a public benefit. It's not required by special enforcement, this is a by right application. We have the law area for the number of units that we're proposing. The applicant has agreed to construct the sidewalk as a good feature of the board. Unfortunately, the sidewalk on the front of the property is ultimately creating a dam which will block runoff from the site to the catch basin. Which has always been the means and group for the stormwater control of the site. The only way to connect the drainage system now that the sidewalk is proposed is really to install a pipe load sidewalk and a direct connection to the catch basin. So we'd ask the planning boards help to allow pipe connection coordination to DEP as the sidewalks are benefiting down. And I believe all the residents would like to see constructed.
Well, let's, let's go on to the, so has, have you cameraed the drainage system yet?
No, not yet.
Why does that going to be done? Because they're not gonna, they're not gonna give me an answer without knowing some information.
We can, we can schedule that, we can try, we can talk with four companies trying to decide. It's just trying to get someone to get it scheduled, you know, there. It's not us lack of trying to find someone. You know, I offered to have the camera scope. You know, to make sure there were no issues with it. And we still plan on doing that, it's just no one wants to try and get people to respond and to get out there and get schedules to challenge it. So it'll get done, but I just.
Alright, because I mean, I'm not gonna make any progress with DPW unless I have some information with a rub.
Yep.
I'm not gonna make, I mean personally, I think that we ought to have a meeting with DPW.
I'm happy to do that.
That's the way I think that that, I don't know.
You'll maybe get against that way, try to call this all the things we're saying.
We're not gonna get any answers in the next two weeks, you know?
I mean, I think there's an opportunity to, I mean, I'm hoping we'll be out there next week to camera. I don't want to promise anything because there, it's, I have no control over my Facebook. But this, you know, there's nothing there now. We're like the gentleman in the neighbor said, this has been a problem for years and we're, our project would solve that problem.
Except I just want to tell you that we just had another project that they had a similar issue. And the board asked for a lot more study before they were agreeing on anything. The same situation of not treating all of one inch of, for all impervious.
Old, but again, this is only the last 15 feet of those two drive ways, it's not.
So we need a quantification of how much you're talking about.
Yeah. And does this include for the calculations, include the sidewalk? That's, so we're putting in the sidewalk, which is creating more impervious, as a request from the board. Because you want sidewalk. And I've offered to do that, I'll pay for that, I'll do it on the property next door, I offered to do that, but that's part of the problem. So.
Bottom line is to keep the water bottom straight. However you do it, you have to do it.
Yep.
And whether you have to redo that pipe to the street or what, that's the bottom line. We had seven inches of rain Saturday afternoon, seven inches.
I know.
And half of it was in my shop, but that said.
None of my water.
You never know. So this is, it's important, it's really, really, really important.
Yep.
That everything is retained on site, it's a tough, tough science, it's no question about it, it's tough.
So I, I like to hear from Mr. Chesky and who can pick up the stormwater out of. So let's hear from our area, who would you, please, Chesky?
So, you know, it's you know, I believe you have some array of issues and I think I can skip over most of those because I think we talked about all of the waivers. I don't know if we talked landscaping, I've looked at that, you know, we talked about the street trees. If there's anything, you all, I think you all have it. Just letting know if there's any question on that, which I sound like you want me to sort of go to the drainage and to the other stuff. Obviously, the parking is another aspect. I that comment I have about the length, it doesn't come out of nowhere, I have worked with other traffic engineers and had letters from them that say when you're up against a garage, you don't park so close. I had pickup trucks, smallest full-size pickup truck you can get. Short, doesn't have extended cab, it doesn't have the eight foot bed. And it's like seventeen half feet long. You're not gonna put it right up against the garage door. Now. Bugger, bugger than that. So it's a design factor, design consideration, did the design event adjusted to make the garages further back? And maybe the house cover over the floor, you split the difference to get a longer length. Because, I mean, it, when you could, you know, might not change the pavement much depending upon how that was done. But this is how it was, came up with, that's why that comment's there, it wasn't, it was from other traffic engineers, not something just for me. And I do think from my experience, it can be a problem because people, no matter what you tell them, don't seem to park the way they'd like to. Anyway, so drainage wise, I think it's really bad design to have something, it's a stone trench right up against the road. You don't want water going in by the road, you don't want it soaking into the ground, you don't want it to overflow, you don't want that. I have to sort of compare this, this, you know, project to the most recent one that I looked at, which was very similar, was the site that sloped to the road. They had, they needed the same waiver you need. What they did though is they, they got as much as they could, they had a flat roof, it was helping get more. But they did have a catch basin at the entrance so that it wouldn't run out, and they did tie into the road. I don't have any ability to tell them you have to tie into that, you're gonna have to work that out with DPW, but it seems to make more sense to do that. I think the question that was being asked, and you may, you may already need it because you are picking up more subject to other comments on the drainage design in the head, but they wanted the requirement, and it doesn't include the the sidewalk account. And they didn't, they didn't, they said, they needed a proper, so that the paving here for the sidewalk doesn't count in the on-site calculations of the walkways.
These do have. Yes, we do.
This doesn't have, I thought you were commenting on the sidewalk in the street. When you were speaking, Tom. Yeah, you talked about the driveway in the street that you were putting in being a factor of that in impervious calculation, you generally don't look at sidewalk in the street as that happens. You are pretty prudish. But what is required, what was required on the other one, just giving us an example, so the net TSS for the site, including the zero percent for these, still need speed. So they had, I believe a treatment catch basin or a treat, a catch basin and a treatment unit at the street before, I don't know if they get there 80%. I mean, that gave them maybe 50, I'm not exactly sure, I'm talking about what they have used, because they might have had a pair of catch basins that went to a dam hole that was the treatment hole.
Yeah.
They had a pair and then the thing, so they, they only had one entrance. So that's how they, that's how they pumped it up.
So we're having to pack, we're having to stretch on the.
Well, the trench they had is just to spill over from these systems that are here. Is there a drainage plan number seven?
Is that in the drainage? This one's over.
I have, I have no problem with PPD allows us to put catch basins at the bottom of those, I have no problem, that's how to resolve.
I think if you can get a deal where you can tie in and connect, you may end up having to adjust the road a little bit because you probably don't want to put in four. But, you know, this road, I believe, is sloping this way, so you might be able to
Get the elevations to work.
You might be able to do something with a little roll, whatever, that's a detail, I'm not trying to design it for you, but I do have an issue with these, I think these things are gonna have a, have a problem with mounting. Because when you're trying to recharge the bigger storms, you have to you're gonna count for that, and when you do that, there's a problem.
Right, so give yourself a call here, you've been working around to possibly, the body.
And against, if you have a connection, you know, you can still catch your inch. I'm not trying to do the design, but sometimes when you do that, and you can, I don't, I don't have in my head what the numbers are for your rates or whatever, but sometimes when you do that, the risks can be worked out. This is a very tight setup, I mean, these things are really close to everything, if it had to be a nightmare, an infiltration system setback, war, but, you know, when you look at the site, essentially this is all wastewater, which unfortunately sewers, they even can't build it. Which may have given you more opportunity to do something with some of this in the back to make these smaller, which you can't right now. Because if you can pick up this pipe, not need all that wastewater, you have space for some of that.
Right, you can't develop it, but if you ever need to reconstruct that.
You might be able to do something like that, that's something to consider, I mean, these ones you probably wouldn't, but these two probably will. And then they could have more room to build it if that's gone. So that's something to think about, but I think those are sort of the main issues, obviously, it all plays into it, there is a lot of pavement, I don't think you're gonna be able to get rid of, like, you know, the space in front of the driveways. But you might be able to, you know, minimize some of the back, but that's the board to decide. So I think those are I mean, the big issues is is how this all works with the street. And maybe look at this, the 340 minute road. Get a sense of what required them, it's almost, it's so similar, the same type of thing, it goes up high in the back, sloped right to the street. Just both of which you build in close to the street, you can't. Just both of which you build in close to the street. You can't get the thing in the front. So they had to, they had a flat roof. So basically though, they could catch the whole roof, or most of it. They couldn't catch all of it because it was flat in the middle and hitched around the edges. So they could catch a lot of the middle to bring it to the back, because they had a big drainage system for that. Then they had a tiny one in the front, but they, they couldn't catch the perimeter of the, of building. So it was a much bigger building.
Right. It definitely could be improved with the DPDW's help.
I think that's the key thing is to get, and figuring out what's out there because it's a, I, I don't know that the system is. I think the one on gain of road, better condition, and the one on, we hear, eventually way. There's some, there's a catch basin, I think, over here that's just like a single catch basin that runs across the street. They're not all tied together. It's kind of a, I think it's probably, the thirty ways are old roads, but probably old system. It's been tagged on and expanded and, I mean, when you looked in the catch basin, it's in front of the site, which I think is, that we have. She'll say this one.
It's the, the bench part there.
It's right there. I mean, you can't see the pipe when it's just full of water. And part of this because the pump and the cellar into it, but I mean, it's gotta be partially clogged up or it wouldn't, I mean, if some pump isn't stuck back from falling out. So there's gotta be problems in that system. When you go to TV, you might find it.
The roots from that street next door, wherever.
Yeah, you might find you can't get the camera down there. I, I wouldn't be surprised. Uh, and I don't know, it, it may not even be manholes that, that catch basins. The older, the older roads that catch basins, catch basins, not, almost no manholes. But I think there were some out there, but wouldn't be surprised if you have some. You know, I, collections.
So for me, the whole project, uh, depends on what you're gonna do with the water. Uh, I personally think you have too much parking here in the back. Okay, I, I just wanna say it's, uh, that's part of your purpose, which is what you were being so proud of waiting for. Now, I know they said there's not enough parking, but the FPTA board has got that far away and we have parking, they go six year. I know the similar type of thing, and so I know it's a little tight. This provides we have a road. Right? And then how proud are you just?
I mean, we're gonna have to put, we're gonna addition, no parking signs on that roadway. Yeah.
I, I have no problem getting rid of as many tandem spots as you want, but I need the ones in the back. For snow storage, I think the UPS trucks or the Amazon trucks are gonna pull in and they're gonna stop in front of a building and hit five or six units and sit there. So that gives them somewhere to pull around the back. If, if we, if you feel that we have too many parking space over the one point fives per unit, we have two per unit, I'll get rid of tandem spots.
You're gonna park in tandem spots.
But you can't stop people from, if, if, if the rules are don't park there, people park there, that's nothing to do. I'll get rid of the tandem spots right to the code. The code is one point five. I'll get rid of twelve.
You're gonna have seventy-five percent tandem parking. So.
I'll get rid of, but that doesn't eliminate any paving.
That, that's right. That's no one to be, and.
Sort of eliminates the over, but it eliminates your concern with too much parking.
Well, no, that's not a question.
Uh, I was, I wasn't talking about this. Just thinking about a.
So we're talking about, like, impervious parking. I'm not talking about paving. So, and I'm not an engineer or anything, but does that have to be asked for? Can it be something else? If it's overflow parking, doesn't it have to be, if you're like, what is, so, the store is so long here.
Like, what is, what's. You can't put floor or silver stuff.
So what's the, um.
You could do possibly.
What's that law called?
Because it's grasscrete, yeah, it could be grasscrete, but you know, your maintenance person is going to have to know that it's there because it's a folly.
That's right.
You just, you have to maintain it.
Well, that would be the operating manual that we give you for every project. We just had that too.
So if you took the equivalent, the two front access rooms that you don't, you're not able to maintain. And you took that equivalent place thing with, uh, grasscrete, the long way. Does that eventually get you to the treating your foot on the, the first entry?
Uh, no. The issue is that there's no way they can collect this water through the elevation. So it's not as a matter of, this increases the impervious coverage to the point where, where over impervious coverage calculation, the final is that we can't collect this water and infiltrate it on-site and meet the groundwater separation. There's not, not enough elevation difference to break this, capture it, infiltrate. And you run into that with any sort of driveway yourself. And what John said is we could, we could put catch basins here and the only way to get to, then we run it to a treatment unit to treat it. And it would go to the sketch base, and that would work out elevation wise because we can then run it to the street, not back, out into our site.
You're gonna have to hold manholes.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I'm willing to arrange a meeting with DPW, but you have to, you have to have all the calculations and all of the data. And I'm not really hearing that it's all here, but yeah.
Well, the camera, we have, like I said, we have the camera yet. I offered to camera it and, you know, I will. It's just, yeah, you guys scheduled to get up.
So I would love to tell you that every highway that I own in the site, uh, and it's wet. And I mean, that sum up is over twenty-four hours a day. So I listened to the last meeting. I listened to this Chesky. I listened to this Pritchett. I listened to this Hale. This is a difficult site. Uh, it's terrible soil, you know that. It doesn't very pretty. But you would have to make sure that it does not cross the street and it get any water or anybody else's property, including countryway. Now, I would have to figure this Chesky, probably not that probably connected up, you know, impervious structure. I mean, those streets are very old. Probably the last one anything was touched up there was the FPT.
Right, and they did not go that far.
They didn't go that far. Yeah, they didn't.
Uh, that's why you can't, roads, much better condition. They may have gone around the corner, they, they reviled over Bound Brook.
But that's as far as they were going.
I just like to go, got to go since I'm.
Right.
So it's.
I think you have to find out the condition of, of the road. I, until we do that, could be, there's no little forward, so I don't, we're in the water, so we're gonna, how are you gonna control that?
Where are your setbacks? The back?
Yes, so this is the back of the property. Yeah.
I don't know if this is appropriate to say right now. I'm saying anyway. At the selectance meeting the other night, well, we heard good news. We heard good news. This sewer is coming to more situated, yes, in three years. And so I asked the question, because I ask various questions, what's the story of Bound Brook? Because they were supposed to put a sleeve on the Bound Brook to treat the rest of Country Way. And I was told, and I was told, news to me, that what they're gonna do is go up more to Canada again. Go around and come back and pick up the rest of Country Way. That was said at the selectance meeting. So it's just FYI.
But it's in three years.
Two to three years.
Two to three years.
Yeah.
But even so, you need to think about putting, um, a, a stub.
Oh, we already have it.
They already have that on the plan. They already have that on the plan.
We have the one forever each building, but you can't prove for that, not now.
No.
Alright, so we have some drainage issues that need to be resolved. We're not gonna get a meeting with DPW probably till the first, first, second meeting July.
Everybody has a different case.
I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to be honest with you, you know? So there's other issues besides drainage, uh, this problem. I mean, you heard a number of waivers tonight. Uh, is the board seemingly in favor of all these waivers? I mean, you have, I mean, the buildings of occupancy, I think seems reasonable. Are you okay with your spaces parking, you know, the parking a little bit in the front yard?
So that would be this built, uh, park, these, these three spaces, the two point nine feet back from the front side of the building versus five feet. That's the waiver that would be requested. So a waiver for one point, one foot?
Two point one, two, two point one foot.
And why was the parking space being made that far?
Why does it need to be five feet?
Why does it need to be where, if I can't.
It's just aligned with the architectural drawings and the garage doors, essentially.
Um, it feels like we've got a lot of waivers where it's.
Well, that's why I'm, that's how I'm trying to get the point.
Front engine forty-nine versus fifty, I can look back, look back. The impervious going from twenty-five to thirty-two to that, that's a big job.
Well, like I said, we can't reduce the impervious coverage for the access drive. And that's what's increasing the, the excess of the, that's why we need a waiver. It's because we're going from twenty-five to thirty-two point five. But we can't make this any, any narrower, when it's the minimum. And the other is just sidewalks that I think the board requested us to have sidewalks, the one, the sidewalk in the street.
Why can't some of the sidewalks be permeable?
Well, what do you mean sidewalks, I guess?
But you're supposed to have a connection from the building to, to the, to the street.
My step, well, my step, my right foot, so that's why I get.
So like stepping stones, like with four inches between?
You can do permeable pavement. I mean, you can do, I mean, pavers with the, with the stone in between.
Yeah.
That they have to vacuum and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I think you just need to explore the option before they, I mean, you're asking for a lot of waivers, and so.
That's a big.
Alright, so we'll, we'll figure out some sort of impervious sidewalk for enough to make that, make up that gap.
And show, show how you calculate it. So like, this is the zone that you can, sort of.
Right, with DPDW.
Yeah, we can have emission funds.
Which is a number, right? Yeah.
Another, the actual revision document said, well, we have to let the actual area that is impervious get.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's in response to this one, but.
Alright, this one.
Well, we want to see it, uh, we want to see it on the plans so we can identify.
In the, on other projects where people have done to sort of shade the areas so they can show us, here's the zone, here's how it can.
Yeah.
Alright, so you also need a waiver for not supplying all the information for the affordability. That, that's a waiver.
Okay, but that will eventually, that comes once we go through Metro and, and most of the, yeah.
Right, right, but you.
This is a waiver on when it happens.
When it happens. You can't, you can't do it right now.
Right.
I mean, alright, so you need a waiver for that.
That will be right there.
What does the board want to do on parking? Technically, they have more than seventy-five percent tandem. I mean, do you want to, they would need to either ask for a waiver or take some of the tandem parking away, but that's not, I don't, I don't see that that's not, I don't see that that's gonna work.
Because people are gonna park behind the garage.
Right, people are gonna park in front of the garage.
In front, that's.
So I mean, do you want them to explore using, um, grasscrete, some type of permeable pavement for the, for the overflow parking in the back?
Yes, yes.
Why don't I just take away ten parking? If that needs to follow, then it's done. You're like, no waiver. Put it on a bash, right?
Well, so does the board consider a space in front, the space in the garage tandem parking? I mean, technically, I think that's a definition.
But I think that's what was identified, was what the planning did. So now you're saying that we have unidentified it.
Well, I mean, if, if they're saying, yeah, but if you're saying we have too much parking tandem, okay, I'll get rid of tandem parking. It's a driveway. Get rid of tandem. I personally don't think it's tandem parking because you have one car inside the garage. So a tandem is, if you have two cars outside and they park behind each other, you count those two spots, I understand. You have one inside the structure. Like, it's, I don't even think it's tandem parking, but to expedite the situation, I know there's some people thought it was tandem, is there tandem parking? So ask for a waiver. So we did, but now if there's too much parking, you know, I'll get rid of tandem parking. But I feel strongly, I don't mind looking at some sort of, you know, different surface just for that back spots. But I think those spots are important to have deliveries and have access. We, we met the bylaw at fourteen sixteen Old Country Way, and the parking there is a pain. Okay, but we met, we're, we're back with, you know, where it's supposed to be, but I don't want to put this project in that situation.
You typed out that.
Yeah, and I think that parking, more parking, the better. Removing the tandem spaces isn't gonna alleviate any, um, impervious surface because it's still a driveway.
It's not gonna change anything.
Yeah.
It's not gonna change a thing because people will change. And if you pull into the garage and it's one person living there and somebody comes to visit, they're gonna park.
On the trailer.
It's not, not quite. So.
It would change the need for a way.
Right. We need a way.
Yeah, if you're seventy-five plus.
Wouldn't get up.
I mean, it's, it's whether we, you guys tell me which one we need to do, and I'm, it's whether we define it as, whether it's gonna ask for or not, right?
Right.
I think that's what.
What we need to, is a tandem parking, and if it is, are, they haven't asked for a waiver, but do you want to give them a waiver?
But if not, he's not asking for a waiver.
I know he's not asking, but reality is, if he needs a waiver, he should ask for a waiver.
But if you don't consider tandem parking, then I don't even need a special permit, a special park. Then none of us have issues.
Well, that would.
I know, I know. That, that's the bylaw.
I know.
That's the bylaw, that's.
And I don't like the term tandem park.
Yeah, yeah.
That down, the regal showing something.
That was outside.
That's outside.
That's outside. And this is different.
Yeah.
I would say we not consider it tandem parking.
I don't either.
Second. Sorry.
I was gonna say, a street, you consider tandem parking?
No.
Alright, and we're, we're, I'm saying it's not tandem.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, that was good. And then I don't need a special permit.
I was still gonna run into Josh probably. They have big vehicles leaning into the street.
Well, there's, there's plenty of space in the garage.
And the garage.
The garages are small. There's already particles.
Alright, so John identified that, um, that the sideline, sightlines have been based on, um, posted speeds, not needing the percentile. Do, on other jobs where required they need the percentile, so I think you should require it back there. You know, we have, John provided the letter from another traffic consultant that expresses a cert about garages. Do you want a traffic consultant to review this plan to see if they have any issues with the space above the garage?
You don't have the spaces in the garage.
It's drive.
It's just, it's no longer parking space.
It's no longer parking space.
But it.
Yes, it is. Where are they gonna park? Alright, let me see.
So it's a parking space, but it's not tandem. So it's a parking.
That's right, it's not, it's not tandem, because it's parking.
Through the case, you can, you can park a lot of vehicles in the garage and a smaller vehicle outside. The solution before was just put a beam line striking behind the driveway.
You should know the other things.
Yeah.
So what is the solution, John, yeah? Or you think we, we have.
I think, I mean, I, personally, I think you need a longer space from my experience. I think that that's, that's reality. Because people, I got to park, I mean, this is a site in Norval where it does do shorter spaces. And in that case, most of it is in the sidewalk, but it has blocked aside. There is the road. So, I mean, I wouldn't say it if I didn't think it was something to be concerned. I'm gonna always take the conservative approach of what it is because I don't like to see the problems. I mean, this is something that's the way it was designed by the applicant. So it's, that's, it's not something that.
Not making a difference, is it? What's there.
I think, well, the comment I have from the, um, traffic engineer, I think, was that the space should be at eight point four feet. So it's pretty long because you don't pull up right in front of the, don't pull out through the garage. You probably have three feet in front of you. A typical car has a couple of feet of width at hand, so if you have an eighteen-foot space, you could put a twenty-foot half.
Twenty-fourth space, it's not happening. That would, that means we're changing it. The whole building's going as one big building. We'll stick it in the middle or we'll go back to the original design for that side. So there's not, we're not getting twenty-four, twenty-four blocks.
And that's all. Effectively, you create an obstacle, of course, to work.
If you paint the, you paint the stripe on the on the driveway and people can't pack there, it can be easily, we have, we have in the condo documents or most of the condo things that I do, they say you can't have a pickup truck outside, you know, over X amount of length. You can't have tags, you know, can't be a a labeled truck, you know. You can easily have in the condo about, you can't park a pickup truck outside. I had that when I lived in Florida. Couldn't park a pickup truck, put the pickup truck inside and the vehicle, other vehicle outside.
That's a suburban.
Well, then it's suburban or, you know, over, I I have no problem putting something in the bylaws that says over, you know, 16, 17 feet, which is, my truck is 17 feet, you know, so we have nothing over 16 feet that can park in the driveway.
I said, I might see that in the.
I had, I had no problem putting that in the bylaws. We did that in our last cover. Because we didn't want pickup trucks, you know, standing there.
Alright, so I'm I'm just trying to get through all the issues. Donna agreed with the help of the town to extend the sidewalk per the police department's comment to across 793. A letter is going out next week to the homeowner asking, you know, the homeowner, if we can, if the town can cut down the tree because the roots obviously will interfere with the sidewalk in the right of way. And in the letter we're putting that the homeowner has to take a sign out of the right of way and take the shrubs out of the right of way too. But that's, you know, it'll be a sidewalk the whole length and it'll pick up sidewalk on the other side of the park. Plain concrete sidewalk, vertical red curb.
That's okay.
So.
As long as the town, the homeowner says no, then it just can't be let in.
It's in the middle of the way. It's it's in the right, technically, technically, the sidewalk would go in the right of way. But if the guy says can't cut the tree down, well, then we'll have to talk to him, so whatever trees you get from the scenic road here, and for this, I thought go, I want this frontage as, you know, to make it, you know, look like.
Sounds like a solution.
That's fine.
The the tree ball, the root I went down looked. You could, yeah, could you put the sign on him, you'd probably kill the tree, you know, cutting up half that tree stuff.
So, the only other issue that I have.
Can I just say a little thing about that? I just, I just don't want the homeowner, I I asked Karen if the town can intervene and make sure town, the homeowner knows, this is not me, I'll be doing the work. You know, I know, I know that, but I'm just saying to board, I will put in the sidewalk at the request of the police department and pay for it.
That's clear.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on 7, 7, it's gonna be 799, 801, 803, those are gonna be the numbers. Is there, is it gonna be phased in 799 and 801?
No, it'll be, all be one project. I'll build it all at one time because of the shared systems.
Alright, it's gonna be, one with the affordable unit has to be done first.
Well, not first, at the same time.
At the same time, you're not gonna get knocking super that without a affordable unit.
Yep, no, I know.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring this up one more time. Is there any thought again, and we know that there are people that don't like it, of having this in, over, out, one way?
I. The problem, I just don't think people, people are gonna, like you said with the parking tandem, people are gonna go in, people who live on those end units aren't gonna go into one, drive all the way around and go to their, they're gonna sit there. I just, I don't know if there's, I mean, the roof, the road wouldn't shrink down because emergency vehicles would still have to go right there.
I understand that, but.
So why do we want a one way? What what would be the advantage of that?
You think it's bad, you know, it's. What's that come out, is any tension, it's, there are lots of places that have one way in and one way out, and people get used to it.
Yeah, I know that, but backing it around, still have to pay attention to that.
I understand, but it's not following two different directions.
Well, can I tell you, I live in a similar situation and you get used to your neighbors and so you try to go up. Like, I know when the lady tube goes down in her driveway and I move off my right way, because she does pay attention. So I'm not still there, but I can get down this this block.
I thought it was feeling the way it was.
This was.
We talked about this last time, right?
Yep.
I didn't have an issue with the way you had the people driving through, that's my opinion.
You didn't talk about five units each. It's not that much in terms of simultaneous traffic.
Alright, so the applicant has asked that this come back from 4th on July 24th. And it's a very quick turnaround and I'm not sure all the issues are gonna be resolved, but that's what the applicant wants.
We're gonna, we're gonna try and but if we run into issues with, I'd like to have these TPWs of potential, he can't get it. And then obviously, you know, extending it out and out of there, there's long distances between, you know, these meetings, I'd like to try to do it as quick as possible, but obviously, we need to make.
Right, but you have to understand, we get projects in and I have to, I have to guarantee the spaces that are appropriate.
Yes.
So, before, I I I haven't asked the audience, is anybody in the public that has any use of safe on this property? Mr. Hill.
Um, yeah, I guess if I take, if I look at it.
If you had to direct something.
Versus what is there right now, which is two houses. One of which is pumping water, cut it straight out of the basin. Okay, so there is groundwater coming from somewhere. This is gonna estatuate that problem by a factor of N. We don't. And there's a lot trying to be jammed into a relatively small area. The the parking's tight, the buildings, it's just 15 units where there were two houses full. I would say if you give her one of those buildings, you solve a lot of your problems. And I realize you want to maximize your dollar, but at the same point in time, you're you're bound to stick a square peg in a round hole like boom. Because you're really running into a variances and variances and variances that you need to make it work. And also the drainage problem, I don't think you figured it out.
And nothing's gonna go full, Mr. Hill, it's not, we know the drainage, nothing's gonna go full. That has absolutely solved what any of the other things.
There's the water that flows into the catch base, it's going to Bound Brook. It's got it, right?
Yep.
It's got it.
Is it, is it treated before it goes in?
Most likely no, at this time.
Alright, so the shortest distance, we're going to Bound Brook, this is directly across the street through my garden. And, you know, better to have a controlled way to do that and I might be willing to work with you. Okay, a better controlled way to do that on the left side of my parking lot at 810. That'll, that'll be a short distance and if, you know, and then it all goes that way as opposed to going into the buildings. So.
Not sure, so what's, what what what's your, what's your comment here?
What I'm saying is that I.
It feels like right now, without any other belt, it all goes to the street.
It goes into the street and flows across into two other properties.
Now this is, the intent is to try to take that water, if that would hurt it, put it in the catch base, right? It would seem like it would have less water though.
Put it in the ca, put it in the catch basin, send it up Countryway past the Bound Brook offices and then put it into Bound Brook up by Wilders, then have it come back down Bound Brook. Well, the shortest distance from that right there is is basically the length from your face. Okay, and 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 I'm amenable to that if something can be worked at, if something would be worked at the catch, you know, I mean, during the two year, the two year flood, I mean, two year flood, that that seems to be minimal. And I think if you do twenty year flood or something like that, two year, I mean, so I mean, take a two year, should get flooded out? No.
Would you be willing to work with the street later? To have something go across an eastern or off of previous property right into Bound Brook?
Don't think you can do that.
I know of that all.
You can't go straight into Bound Brook.
Yeah, we, but it's like catch bases, but, yeah, it it is, but I mean, we can, if we do it by catch base, and listen, I don't wanna, if if we have to put a catch base, then that's obviously costs more money and, yeah, well, that's what we have to do to do it, but just also to address, I just want to address some stuff you mentioned about, you know, optimizing money, giving stuff in there, so the only, I originally bought 803 Countryway and I was happy to do my five unit building and beat up. 799, there was, after I bought 803, the owner of 799 that passed on, came to me and showed me a plan of what he was doing. Thirty units, forty feet wide. No problem, no input from anyone and he would have gotten it because it was a great, it's right down the street from the M B T A. Yeah, I've seen the plans from Bernie and I know the guys. Yeah, there was, yeah, no, I know, so. It's, so, yeah, so he, so I did not want that project because I didn't want thirty units on 799 right next to my project. So I bought 799 to reduce the non-units to what's allowed by the by the by right and I reduced it by 60% of units, so I have ten units, it's what the town is allowed. If that's something that, you know, you don't like and that's something you go to the town meeting and present, you know, change bylaws, but I've, I'm doing this to benefit that area and ultimately hopefully make some money. But but that's, that's what's allowing your bylaws far as number of humans.
Well, it's like you're saying, you know, you're you're, you know, you could have dropped an atomic bomb, but but you didn't do it, so you're benefiting the area.
That's, I'm doing exactly what's.
The guy that owned it, the guy that owned it was whack on.
Well, no, I'm talking about the guy who bought it from him. No, 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 I'm not saying it. No, no, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 you you must understand, it's the guy, it's the guy you told me his dad worked for. No, no, we're talking about the wrong guy. It's, it's the guy who bought it from him, the guy who bought all those properties, who was planning on developing. So, the only reason I bought that is to stop the thirty units we built. And I'm putting in ten, which is a reduction of sixty units, and I'm not doing it.
I think if we can get this water situation.
Yes, and I think we can.
Have for nine percent there.
I was happy to work with you, like, obviously, show you plans to, and pump us up in that. John, I've worked with him before, he's not gonna let us do anything, unfortunately, that that whole, that whole pass is, you know.
And it's like saying on the side.
Catch basin and catch basin.
The days you're on, now it's just dumb.
On the 799, go across the street.
Yes, there, right.
To 810, my part.
You could have jumped it directly.
No, no, it doesn't cross, in front of a house.
Yeah.
That's not the place to do this, okay? And it goes down the street from Bound Brook Development, I mean, the offices. It goes down the street and that's where it gets jammed up, that's where the three rooms are, down the street. So when they reed that out, there's flow, when those roofs go back, there's no flow.
Maybe it's just a TPW.
I need a runner.
I will arrange the meeting and log.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll.
So, I think we need a continuance here, so he's asked for July 24th and it might be an awful long night that night.
We'll bring on Jammies.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Are you ready? I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for major cycling administrative review and stormwater permit for multi-channel buildings in Village Center and Lakeview District, North City Village 23rd, Outer Village, subject for V C N and N three opening at July 24th, 2025 at 7:00 P M, continue the time of action, bound to the town court until August 29th, 2025.
Second. A roll call, please. Ms. Irvine?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, look forward to doing this again and look, okay.
Have a nice school.
Karen, that's good, go drop those street trees off at your office.
They're not gonna, not yet.
Drop right off your office.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Okay. Hold the right of law, I have a problem with the night, sorry. We have a public meeting, a cycling review, we can meet, Josh, we have 85 to Grand School Street Highway, assessors map on.
Want me to read this?
Yeah, 22 dash 2 dash 3 dash 0, we delay, it's a public meeting, it's not a meeting.
Okay. I'm in accordance with the city of Zone bylaws such 77, cycling administrative review, planning order done in public meeting Thursday, June 12th, 2025 at 7:30, so I will wait. And the select boards here in Rhode Island call, 600 Chief Justice, Mr. Highway. Subject to the hearing is cycling administrative review of an application submitted on behalf of Kennedy's Country Gardens. Assessors map, log, 62, dash 3 for reconfiguration of parking lot approved, particular of desk recupulation, no pinch of use and a required number of parking spaces to increase by less than five. The plan is available at the planning office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
They may be in the law.
Hello, hi. Congratulations on your reelections.
Yes, swinging your flag.
And Steve. Oh, Steve, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
Um, Jeff Felice, I'm everybody, Felice in Harris, I'm here with Jeff Asset, my engineering. You go for everybody's end, Kennedy's Country Gardens. Uh, I'll just briefly run through the project, kind of the highlights. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site that's currently made out. It's kind of a.
A disaster.
A disaster, yeah.
Very simply, disaster.
So, there's basically a driveway parking area that would be clean, the display area of the building. Have people and carts going back and forth, the parking aisles are some standard, the parking spaces are some standard. There are 44 current parking spaces. So we have kind of a safety issue along over to cycle and update. In addition, we have a cesspool at the property, uh, right along the edge of the buffer to the wetland, so in addition, what we're proposing to do is to create a certified compliant septic system on the property and so basically, what's happening is, is that we're taking the area where the business trees typically are displayed along the street. We're making that a parking aisle, parking spaces, there will be four additional parking spaces that all will be compliant, so will the aisle with the design standards. Uh, and then what we're doing is removing some of that display area that we're losing towards, uh, along the front of the building kind of to the right of the door as you go towards those uh, greenhouses. And then we're also putting some, uh, some of that display area in the back, behind the building and that requires us to move two of the greenhouses closer to Neil Beach Street. So Jeff can go over, you know, exactly, you know, what we're up to. We're also putting some stormwater mitigation feature in that doesn't presently exist at all on the property. Meaning the rain garden to treat the water before it goes in towards the wetland area. And I think that's pretty much it, the highlight. There are no changes to the zoning use being proposed, no increases in zoning use being proposed. It's, it's really just a safer and more environmentally, uh, better site. So, Jeff?
You can go. Alright, um, so the property itself is 4.3 acres of that 3.6 acres of upline. Uh, the property, as we know, is frontage off of C K C Highway at the bottom of the page and then Neil Beach Street as well on the right side of the area in the north. It's bonded by a residential property to the west and then to the Salt Arch and, uh, beyond the North River to the south. Uh, but the upper portion of the property is just about entirely developed. Currently, the principal building is right in the middle there. On the right side of the building is our greenhouses and then to the left is a smaller one, one and a half story building. Um, as you're aware, there is the, uh,
Um, as you're aware, there is the, uh, two curb cuts on C J C highway and in and out. Pulling in, all the customers are taking a left turn and it's deliveries only going straight back where trucks stand in park, unload. And then to the left is Neil Street where they go back to C J C, back to the roundabout. Um, so again, um, as Jeff mentioned, the reason we're here is primarily for the parking. All the parking spaces are undersized, the aisle is undersized, they bisect the display and the principal building. So it's really not safe, not good for business. Um, so what we're proposing is the curb cuts don't change at all. Um, we're shifting the parking to be closer to the road as opposed to closer to the building. Um, by doing that, we call it the aisle twenty-four P Y, nine by eighteen standard spaces. The intent is not to provide any additional parking, there is four more spaces compared to existing, but there's no increase in use at all. Along the face of the building will be a vertical grand curved with a sidewalk and a vapor walkway with a front main entrance. That vertical grand curve will, uh, direct the water down to a boat wound, we lack a small building there, where there's going to be a swell and rain garden. Along C J C, there's, we're providing a six foot buffer, um, currently we should, um, to get a plan to plan for that buffer, which we will provide. And the boundary along the corner of the property will remain. We are providing three landscape beds to rig up the parking along the street, and the total of six trees, most. And I think as part of that landscape, we're proposing bushes as well, that's how we want. Um, and then the other smaller portions of the project are beginning to gravel, we're updating Neil David for the delivery trucks. Upgrading the septic system and slight adjustments to the display area behind the building. Uh, for stormwater, we did prepare a full stormwater report and has been renewed by conservation, of course, women who've been screwing with that. We'll still be waiting on that review comments. Um, but shooting improvement, currently, all the runoff goes to your catch basin, which is in front of the smaller building. And then a pipe to the hundred building back to eleven, and that backs up all the time, you're told, in the building, maybe a post. So this will direct the water around and treat it. For lighting, we are adding more light posts in the parking lot, they will be downlights, we'll eliminate light that are off the site. The use, that's really a daytime use, maybe when there's self-interest, we're straight, we don't have to really see those, we need it, but they'll, they'll be installed. So yes, we're not seeing any waves or variances, everything much needed, we're, we're, we're the site. We had one hearing with conservation, they had provisions requested, but we are waiting for the stormwater review. We're back for.
Yeah, we're waiting for the stormwater review from conservation, so how tall are lights, are you? What is the light height?
I'll, I'll get you that information.
Yeah, I need to get that information, I need a write-up from you for how the purposes of the site plan review are met. Seven seventy point six, eight through whatever it is, if you could just give me a sentence or two how you meet this that would go a long way to help it be, prepare a decision. So technically, technically I need to know on that plan, I need to know size, variety of plants. And I think that it got at least two and a half inch caliber trees. And I would recommend to you more that wave a landscape plan, as long as they put that information on the plan that seems to be, should be sufficient.
That would be filling up, it's just like, oh, it's chicken company.
Right, yeah.
And they have flowers.
Section seven fifty-one, the bylaw requires a landscape plan.
They are.
So if you get the information on this plan, that I think we can, we can wave that. I don't have a decision for tonight because we're waiting stormwater, they were hoping it'll come next week. So they asked to be back on the agenda on the twenty-sixth. Uh, so hopefully we can resolve this, that, I mean, it really is cleaning up a safety hazard. And, and I'm sure it will look nicer too, and, you know, putting improved storm rating, it is a big plus. But your scope is just the parking and as part of the site plan review, you have quite that range of just that one.
Yeah, it's a trade engine. And my, what's gone?
Right, to stop, right.
To stop.
So that.
I guess, yes.
It's a plus, it's a plus, yes.
I, I would think that sort of key is that those lights where you are, that still shine up every day, they don't, and that's, they don't want to.
Why?
Go broad, it's, it's a greater.
Now, I'm still.
For business has been definitely one of the benefits of it.
Oh, huge, yeah. Now, is there anything to be said about this question?
Yeah, so I actually spoke about, about that, um, in the case I mentioned, is that there's really no buffer now, anything, that whole area is compacted and starved.
Grand.
Exactly.
This has been here a long time. Pretty tough getting that for me, I don't resent you so.
Right. It has to be easy pulling out, I pulled out a day, day, I ended up going down and turn around, I gotta be, uh, some street, I got a permit taken, like, second. I couldn't see out past the trees, so.
Okay, so I think, you know, hopefully if we can get all the stuff, we can get it wrapped up next time, so I would.
Yeah.
You know, if you get me that, if you get me all these things, that will be extremely helpful.
Yeah, perfect. Obviously, I have a big interest.
So you have that, that was presented, we have a real set.
Correct.
All right, so you have a motion, Anne?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for the cycling administrative review for revocation of parking lot at eighty-five Chief Justice Ching Highway, Kennedy's Country Gardens, until June twenty-sixth.
July.
July. It says June.
Is it, I'm sorry.
It's still in June, still in June. One, sit on the next meeting. Do you have that meeting?
That's two weeks.
Yeah.
That outside?
Yeah. It all depends on where we get that stormwater review.
Okay.
I don't know, why don't we, um.
Otherwise it's dry camp.
Thank you, just hold it, if you get it, um, sorry, if you just get it done, it's fine.
Let's just.
We're gonna get it delivered, okay?
Okay. So shall I, may I continue?
Sorry, assuming that the stormwater issue is a big issue, then.
Like a fire.
Squeeze that in.
She's been trying to, she's been trying.
All right, until June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M, continue the time for action for filing with the town court until July eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Olive Baker. Miss Becker.
Ms. Irvine?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I guess, maybe we'll see you in the future, you figure.
Whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and, yeah, you have to put a bed for like that, somewhere to put all the. Stand with some of the guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we have a public meeting, I didn't say it's. The mission, yes, okay.
Yeah.
Public meeting, checking to successfully provide site plan review permit, fully functional app.
In accordance with Master Law's chapter A, section nine eleven, I see the bylaws, section seven seven, site plan. We're planning on doing that, public meeting Thursday, June twelve, twenty twenty-five at eight P M, all nine minutes late. And a select your hearing room, town hall, six hundred Chief Justice Ching Highway. The subject of the meeting is an application for site plan review for accessory dwelling, ADU submitted by Ryan Greenberg on behalf of client Jesse.
Probably.
Thank you, for property located at Forty Crescent Avenue. Uh, at eight hundred seventy-nine point nine one square feet, ADU is proposed. And the property, property is shown on accessory map, twenty-six dash five dash fifteen, a body of another interest, partners are invited to attend the meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
Hello?
Hello, I think you guys know me, um.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, so am I right, I don't know if you guys ever, uh, run into Brian Greenberg, he's, uh, an excellent builder. Uh, luckily, he also has a planning board in Harwell and a select, great for the Harwell as well. Uh, one, uh, you're both, you're both, my day is twenty-five hours long, so.
So, maybe I don't have, okay, I think, move on.
Uh, this property, the lot is conforming fully. The house on the lot presently is slightly non-conforming on the front yard. The, uh, plan is to gradually construct the house in a manner that, uh, completely eliminates the non-conformity on the front and creates a fully conforming dwell on the property. Uh, the dwelling and a separate detached dwelling, or not dwelling, excuse me, separate detached building, uh, which is a garage. Um, both fully conforming setups. So the owner is proposing to put an ADU unit in the basement level of the, of the dwell. Uh, that ADU unit will meet your design standards and be less than nine hundred square feet. So it's, I guess, technically defined as an ADU within. Um, so basically, uh, the purpose of it is to allow the owner's, uh, parents to also live there, uh, who are aging. And, uh, essentially, we have plenty of parking on site, the detached building is a free car garage. Um, and there are no really foreseeable issues with architectural elements, uh, being impacted as a result. There, it's fully compliant with, uh, it's, it has a time capsule. So there's really no visual, audio, or, uh, audible kind of impact whatsoever. The, uh, exit or the egress from the ADU will be on the rear of the building, so you won't be able to see it from the street. And that's pretty much it.
Make it be extra garage?
It's not that.
No, so the, I know actually the one thing I would add to, to just, um, uh, commentary is just that I know that disturbance isn't, you know, necessarily germane to this hearing, but we are, uh, keeping this discussion. So, um, it's actually gonna have the exact same footprint, but a little smaller, as Jeff noted, to your limit, non-conforming. Um, the garage would be a separate building, um, that's kind of why you see it off to the right if you're standing on Crescent looking at the, at the building.
But that's not the A U.
Correct, yeah, that garage is not A U, the A U will, is proposed in the basement and the entrance and egress to the A U is on the rear of the building, um, so not physically in the street, it's also.
That's a good, physically healthy.
Yeah, so I don't know if you, if you've been by the site, it's kind of some Crescent kind of curves up to the left, right? And the grave drops with almost fourteen feet from front to back. It's actually, it's, it, it has the appearance of, you know, just sort of a, a normal colonial sort of two and a half, whatever, story. Um, volume, but there's a basement that has walkout in the rear because the grave drops off some basket.
So you have an entrance and a exit.
Yes.
On there? At the hallway, we will.
Yeah, not only require tighter baby bylaws, also a building for.
Yeah, I want my building, I don't have that.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Did you use the check here?
And, and it's, it's a uniform architect, right, so no differentiating.
No, I mean, this is, this is sort of the, the classic case where it's, uh, it's completely unstoppable from, uh, single family dwelling on a single family used lot.
And what are they using to use for?
Yeah.
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 You know, it's nice that we have full kitchen, a heavenly little red circle around the stove.
You can thank Julie Johnson, that's, that's, that's right.
Well, I know that.
She's excellent.
But that is just, obviously too many of them, either that's, oh, or little red circles around the stove.
You know, I had a call last week from somebody who had previously done that, or never permitted a doing that because it didn't need to, because it didn't have a stove, now they want to put a stove in and they're gonna come in and do it right.
You could only do it anyway.
I got brush, this is very nice. Any questions? Do, do, anybody, any, anybody, Carol, all set? Rebecca, you all set?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi Rebecca. I got a smile.
Okay, I move to make the following findings, fact one, on May twelve, twenty twenty-five, Ryan Greenberg, on behalf of client Jesse E. Applied for accessory dwelling unit, ADU, cycling administrative review for ADU within a principal dwelling of property at Forty Crescent Ave. Two, according to the D, property at Forty Crescent Ave, is owned by Jesse and Christine Brockle, Nikki. Both owners signed the application and there was a letter of occupation, Ryan Greenberg, to submit an application for cycling administrative review for the ADU. Three, based on floor plans submitted by the applicant, the floor area of post ADU will be approximately eight hundred seventy-eight point nine one square feet. The principal dwelling will be six thousand six hundred thirty-seven. According to the applicant's application and plans submitted for the move, post move, principal dwelling, as the existing dwelling is to be remodeled. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point one A, the zone by law for ADUs, as the bylaw allows fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling are nine hundred square feet, together small. For the ADU, a complete separate custody unit and then will be only one separate dwelling on the lot. By the ADU is sworn to the existing home, six, the property is a residential R three zone district. The proposed detached ADU structure means all required setups attached. Proposed ADU structure, it's not a detached, you can get the check rooms. So take us a word to chat. All right, proposed ADU structure meets all the requirements. Require, uh, building height, yard requirements for principal dwelling. Seven, the proposed ADU will have access through two doors, one to the outside and one up to the principal dwelling. Eight, at least one private off-street parking spaces, but the ADU, as the ADU is located over point five miles from the Red Station, very terminal of a station. Down the ADU will be serviced by town water and sewer, E P W requirements, water connections and sewer connections, will be that. The application is standing to the city of zone by law law and ADU eleven pursuant to general laws, chapter forty A. Section five and six of the post ADU will be subject to post amendments to the city of zone by law. Regarding ADUs, notice, notice of which was first published seven twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. And was duly considered by the city annual town meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Town meeting passed the bylaw by the general vote. The applicant wishing to proceed with this application prior to final approval of the bylaw of, of bylaw by the general's office on defending by law has applied for the site plan review. Please, there is.
Hi.
Olive Baker.
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Irvine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
I move to approve the site plan administrative review for ADU at Forty Crescent Ave with the following conditions. One, except for any changes to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform architecture plans by testing formal designs of Marshall Mass, for protocol, Nikki residence at Forty Crescent Ave, City of Mass. dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, six plans, including exterior foundation. Including exterior foundations slash proposed. Floor plan A dash one, floor plan, first floor plan A dash two, second floor plan A dash three, third floor plan A dash four. Front and right side elevations, A dash six, rear and left side elevations, A dash seven. Lot plant garage and seven three twelve units of the Forty Crescent Avenue City of Mass by Great Consulting LLC dated April twenty five, twenty twenty five. Site plan number Forty Crescent Avenue City of Mass by Great Consulting LLC dated April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Sheet one seven, basement foundation plan A D U split footage of eight hundred seventy eight point nine one square feet. Showed on sheet A dash one, May four fifteen, twenty twenty five. Setback plan number Forty Crescent Ave, City of Mass dated May twelve, twenty twenty five by Great Consulting LLC. Two, the A D U cannot be used for short term rent and rent as deployed in the zone by law. Our restricted covenant shall be recorded against the property. That effect, prior to any office permit, accessory dwelling. The covenant shall run into the town. And be enforced by the town to enjunct it completely. And with the property owner required to pay the town reasonable fees and cost of successful enforcement of any violation of the restricted. Three, no further expansion of the A D U floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. While the owner is not required to live in the principal of accessory dwelling, the owner shall own the principal of A D U. While all requirements, the board of health, business, department, city, or fields, private works, private apartment and other town agencies. Must be met prior to occupancy of the A D U. Six, A D U shall conform all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanic, fire and plumbing systems and bylaws. Water, seven, water connection must meet requirements of the E B W. Water condition for the A D U. Eight, the civil construction must meet all requirements of the civil division for the A D U. Now, any lightning structure, unlightning, detonation, light on the property. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M, weekdays, eight A M on Saturdays, and shall cease till late at seven P M. A sunset, sunset, which I was earlier. No constructions shall take place on Sundays or on legal, state and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. No apartment, any vehicles shall occur on public way. Eleven, runoff of the proposed A D U shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation. Leaving the site very construction, siloxachal be used as necessary along a standardized construction.
Yeah, I have one more condition.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, the decision must be recorded, registered, and these prior to building permitting issues. Yes. Olive Baker.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert, yes. Ms. Burbine, yes. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, really appreciate it. Great night.
Is that the fourteen days? No, it's like.
It's, you've sort of come past the lookout and then there's a brand new one being built. And then there's an old one that's ours. And then there's another brand new one being built. It's kind of right around the corner. Yeah. It's a nice spot. I'd like to live in one of these houses.
Someday.
Except for the water. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Move to our two of our meetings.
That can kill you.
And again, I have to print a signature sheet. Strike out a brother joke.
Moves of the twenty four meeting minutes on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Second. Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert, yes. Ms. Burbine, yes. And Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we won't have a topic, but anybody.
A lot.
A lot.
I'm gonna go through all of them. I move to approve purchase order twenty five, one oh nine, two three, in amount of forty six dollars sixty cents. Post stormwater annual subscription. Purchase order two five, one oh nine, two eight, in amount of one hundred ninety five dollars for stormwater permit. Here review that's zero way. Purchase order two five, one oh nine, four, in amount of two thousand one hundred forty five dollars for stormwater permit period services at nine hundred three back road. Purchase order two five, one, 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 two, in amount of four hundred ten dollars for period view of construction of common driveway in Old Three Bell Street. Purchase order two five, one, 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 in amount of two hundred forty five dollars for period view service regarding three forty, a tree leg. Again, a row. Purchase order two five, one, 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 zero, in amount of one thousand. Seven dollars fifty cents period view services at seven ninety nine, eight over three hundred way. Purchase order two five, one, 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 two five, in amount of one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars for. Full stormwater permit period view services at nine more with drive. Purchase order two five, one, one, two, three, eight, in the amount of one thousand. Four hundred forty dollars for full stormwater permit. Period view services at nine more with drive. Purchase order two five, one, one, three, oh seven, in the amount of three hundred ninety eight dollars. U W B Mason for August spots.
Second.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert, yes. Ms. Burbine, yes. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Uh, I think we should wait for the week off, let it rest. That's what you wanna do.
I'm doing, because you don't end up, you know what?
Rebecca, would you put for two weeks until everybody's here to do the real look of whatever we had to play the book?
Nothing's gonna change it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine. We could wait.
Okay.
It's just not the best way to attend a meeting on the Zoom, on Zoom.
I know. Okay, so now they're talking about our alternate mental position. So, uh, Ian and I, uh, went to the board of selecting meeting the other night. And a nice man, uh, was interviewing with the Conservation Commission. And, uh, I turned to Ian and said, he needs to come play with us. He's a civil engineer. He knows Memphis, he does storm water. He not came and he did not immediately motion it in the hallway, so.
He was bad.
He was bad.
Nice job.
Immediately.
They said to this John, you poached him.
You poached him. And then you knew it too.
And he was kind of, I told him that we had a position available and. We talked about frozen plots, we don't play any board as opposed to the Conservation Commission. Uh, I asked him to send his resume to Carrie, which, which we see today. I'm seeing, you see there. So what is our decision? If we're just gonna appoint him?
So I have to find out if we have to advertise.
Okay.
But we could still. Interview him next time if he wanted.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know that we have to put an ad because it was on the ballot and nobody. So theoretically, it's on the website. It's all that stuff for a long time. So I gotta talk to Jim on that.
Okay, so I guess he's, uh, he's, he's a young guy, uh, what's his name?
Robbie Burgess.
Robbie Burgess. It's a, cause I don't see anything beautiful stride. He's a civil engineer, right? Anything else you want to add to that?
I don't think that's pretty. I don't think we should do a lot there.
No, I guess, just that we have this, yeah, um.
I'll talk to Jim.
We'll talk to Mr. McGrove on Monday, see if we have to post you.
The thing is. Last time we did the points on one, it took.
Three months.
It's like three months and we don't have that. We're too busy and enough already. I mean, we're beating bushes to get to a lot.
Right, so.
So enough said.
Right, so I'm just, we'll clarify on that and go from there.
Right. Cause I'd like to see you in here in July.
So then we have our liaison report. So I think you should also wait on the liaison.
I think we should play out, yeah.
We'll, we'll, so we'll have to, everyone will be ready for whatever they are. The lead piece right now, little closes, Ms. Baxter. And we'll put those there and we'll, we'll watch you do what the next time. Uh, because if we end up with the select one meeting and the exciting thing is someone is coming to North Central, uh, on a Friday, they told us. Uh, in two years?
By twenty seven.
By twenty seven. Well, we have a party ready to go. We got a country way, but we had three groups to look at.
They decided on a country way.
They decided on a country wedding. I don't know if there's gonna be any pub halls, if they didn't know that yet.
They didn't think they needed it because of.
Top weather.
Rather than that.
It comes about that way. So apparently eight months, we're ready to rock and roll. We just need some money.
Right, and they apply for five million dollar, uh, mass work spread.
They've applied for mass work spread.
Yeah.
I want to subscribe to that.
Well, that would be.
That's good.
Okay.
So. So, uh, so and then we, we bought a nice new home.
Fully attached.
And then that's, I, zone with conservation, everyone's kind of on board with summer time. But else?
Um, CDC is canceled because the, we just opened up a development.
All right. So we got plenty of people.
Uh, where. It's.
I think it's too busy.
It's very busy. You know, so, you know, um. Hopefully, we can get some lighter meetings this summer.
Okay. If not, well, I'll go with Mr. Pritchard's pool. I'll stay. Okay. All right. So shall we indicate motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Olive Baker. Okay.
Feel better, Rebecca.
Feel better.
Thanks.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Burbine.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
And good night.
Good night.
Night, everybody.